This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of SISD is being called to order. The time is 5:01. If you will please rise and join us. 6:01, sorry about that. If you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance which is being led tonight by Sofia Bertaro, who is a 4th grader from Dr. Sushuk Elementary. Sofia?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Sofia. Item number 3 Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Espinosa?
Yes President Nahara, members of the Board, I am so pleased to announce that college registration for our seniors began today via our operation college-bound partnership with El Paso Community College and also the University of Texas at El Paso, UTEP. Our first college registrations occurred today at Socorro High School this morning and I was honored. It was truly an honor for our students, our faculty to see Dr. Natalicio and also Dr. Serata. Dr. Natalicio obviously the president at UTEP and also Dr. Serata the president at EPCC. And for, you know, I remember back in the day when people would stand in long lines that curled around, around buildings in order to get your class schedule. Now, our seniors, and it started at Socorro High School, and we're going to do this at every high school within the next month or so, our students have EPCC and UTEP staff coming to them in their own high schools to help register them even before they graduate from high schools. That's truly amazing. Now I hear and I understand that other school districts want to do the same thing. So I want to thank our amazing Board members, our teachers and staff for being the leaders in college-bound efforts. So truly remarkable day. Also another memorable event that will be coming up on April 3rd, which is next Wednesday, I always look forward to this day, is our James Butler Games, which is at the SAC. Elementary schools are scheduled at 9 o'clock and middle and high schools, the secondary are scheduled at 2:00 PM. So please come out to support our amazing students and I guarantee a great time for all. Also pre-K, pre-K registration is scheduled on Saturday, April 6th, and I want to thank everyone who's helping to get all of our four-year-olds registered and ready to hit the ground running. Look forward to see all our little ones registered on April 6th on Saturday. President Nahara, that concludes my comments.
Thank you Dr. Espinosa. Item number 4 Board Honors. Mr. Escobar?
Good evening President Nahara, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Espinosa. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Our first recognition will honor elementary students who won the 4th Annual SISD Math B Competition. Let's get ready to bumble. The event, which is like a spelling bee, featured more than 200 students and consisted of five rounds of challenging math problems. The young mathematicians displayed outstanding abilities in math fluency, mental math, and three-step operations. Congratulations to this year's winners. They are, from James Butler Elementary, James Kavanaugh. His teacher is Joanne Wicklin. From John Druigan School, Emmett Rappel. Rappel? RuPo. RuPo. Got it Emmett, got it Emmett. His teacher is Julie Torres. From Dr. Sushuk Elementary, Angel Espinosa. His teacher is Cassie Lopez. From Sierra Vista Elementary, Mason Davis. From Horizon Heights Elementary School, Erin Jason Lazarin. From James Butler Elementary, Tyson Bradley. And teacher again, Joanne Wicklin. Also with us are teachers Erin Jason Lazarin's teacher Vivian Sanchez from Horizon Heights. Students, teachers if we'll please have you come back to the front for your photo with our superintendent and Board of Trustees. And just a quick note that the photo is taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. There is a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner of the front page, and all of these photos will be posted on a gallery where they're available for free high-resolution download. Perfect. There you go. If you look right at Mr. Largo, right in the center. Everybody good? Yeah, let's get one more. winning the 2019 Battle of the Blue Bonnets reading competition with their excellent reading comprehension talents. This is the fourth year that the Bull Pups win the Blue Bonnet Contest and proudly take home the championship trophy. This year, they beat out, absolutely round of applause for the Bull Pups. This year, they beat out 28 other teams with their unparalleled knowledge of the subject matter in the Texas Blue Bonnet Award nomination books. Congratulations again to these outstanding young students. They are Aiden Landa. Daniel Gamino. Mateus Lopez. And they're led by campus librarian Mercedes Hasso. Students, if we can have you please join Ms. Hasso, our board and superintendent for your photo. Next, we recognize a Benito Martinez Elementary student who, who will present the Texas Blue Bonnet Award at the Texas Library Association Conference. This student will have the opportunity to hand the Texas Blue Bonnet Award to author Patricia McCormick, who wrote the book Sergeant Reckless: The True Story of a Little Horse Who Became a Hero. From Benito Martinez, congratulations to Casara Phillips. She is joined by her campus librarian Claudia Diaz. If we can have you two please return to the front for your photo. Our next recognition will honor SISD students for winning the 2019 Housing Authority of El Paso Art Contest. The theme of this year's contest was "El Paso is My Home." SISD students took home the top three awards in the middle and high school categories. The winners were honored at a special reception and had their work exhibited at the Downtown Maine Library. The art pieces are now on display in the Housing Authority of El Paso Maine Office. Congratulations to these talented student artists. They are, from Desert Wind School, Clara Peña. Jaylen De La Paz. And Diego Terrazas. Their teacher is Karen Perez. The high school winners are from Eastlake High School, Nora Castillo. And Jasmine Potello. If we can have you back up front for your photo please. For our next honor, we recognize SISD students who advanced to state in the 2019 Visual Arts Scholastic Event Competition. This year, more than 550 art pieces were entered in the contest. From the hundreds of unique art pieces, the work of 10 SISD students was among the best. The artists will compete at the state competition in San Marcos next month and participate in hands-on workshops, sketching opportunities, and compete for scholarships. Congratulations to these award-winning artists, and they are, from Americas High School, Their teacher at Americas is Leticia Nuevanos. From Eastlake High School, Anna Calderas. Her teacher, she made it around, Claudia Castañada. From Eldorado High School, Destiny Votion. Her teacher is Allison Vega. Also from Eldorado High School, Guisede de la Fuente. Her teacher is Ms. Candice Prince. And representing a winner from Pebble Hills High School is teacher Ms. Rosa Villarreal. If we can have you all please back to the front for your photo. Can you see everybody? Next, we recognize Team SISD students who won the 2019 Citywide Black History Art Contest, which honored African-American singers who revolutionized music worldwide. The winners were recognized at a special reception and their creations were displayed here in the District Service Center. Congratulations to these students and their instructors. They are, from Desert Wind School, Jennifer Hernandez. Her teacher is Karen Perez. From Enzer Middle School, Jessie Pretado. His teacher is Melissa Ariano. Representing her student from Eldorado High School, Allison Vega. Also from Eldorado High School, Tanya Casas. Up next, we honor an adult education student for winning the 2019 ESL Persistence Adult Learner of the Year Award by the Texas Association for Literacy and Adult Education. The award recognizes individuals who have overcome difficult circumstances to pursue learning, demonstrate leadership, support other adult learners, and manage significant responsibilities related to employment, family, or community. From SISD's adult education program, congratulations to Maribel Cerón Delgado. For our next recognition, we will recognize three Team SISD athletes who swept the 2019 UTEP Athletic Department Flo Hyman Awards. The awards pay tribute to Flo Hyman, who was captain of the 1984 U.S. Olympic volleyball team. She brought worldwide recognition to the sport and took an active role in promoting opportunities for women athletes. The SISD students were among 51 female athletes in El Paso nominated for the recognition that is awarded in three categories, elementary, middle, and high school. And again, first time one district has won all three awards, had students recognized for all three awards. Congratulations, from Lujan Chavez Elementary, Kyla Dickerson. Her teacher and coach is Justin Gonzalez. From Sunridge Middle School, Nave Buntin. Teacher and coach is Monte McNeil. And from Eldorado High School, Riley Perez. Next, we honor SISD wrestlers whose impressive season earned them a spot in the UIL State Competition. These elite students placed among the top athletes in their weight class and earned notable accolades, including a Texas Wrestling Championship Title. In addition, one SISD wrestling coach won the 2019 Texas High School Wrestling Association Coach of the Year Award. Congratulations to all these outstanding athletes and their coaches. From Americas High School, Cassandra Lindeman. And Texas 6A Boys State Coach of the Year, Kenneth Jury. Our 2019 State Champ wrestler, Esser Walker from Montwood High School. Also athletes from Montwood High School, Cassie Favela. And Tereus Henry. Their coach is Oscar Norris. From Pebble Hills High School, Alexandria Olivares. And their coach is Steven Gutierrez. From Eldorado High School, Ernesto Martinez. Maybe we put coach up, one of the coaches up a level. Our next recognitions will honor SISD Boys and Girls Varsity Basketball Teams for winning 2018-2019 UIL Championships. Up first, we will recognize the Eastlake High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for winning a UIL 5A by-district championship. The Lady Falcons had a big season this year and showed up to the court with enthusiasm, energy, and heart. They ended the season with an overall record of 21 and 13. In addition, they had a district MVP player and several District 25A First Team Representatives. Congratulations to these students on their phenomenal season. They are, Danae Vialva, excuse me. Mia Lares. Ana Elena Ramirez. Kayla Quintana. Vanessa Herrera. Alexis Landeros. Amari Sacedo. Kristi Urenda. Megan Curtley. Assistant coaches Chris Granados. And they're led by head coach Joey Woodard. And they're led by Head Coach Joey Woodard. Congratulations. Next, we honor the America's High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for winning the UIL 16A District Championship. This is the first time in 10 years that the Trail Blazers won the championship. The Lady Trail Blazers dominated the season with a superb all-around performance. They earned big wins and ended with an overall record of 24 and 10 and a district record of 8 and 2. The team also earned individual honors such as an Offensive Player of the Year and First Team All-District Athletes. In addition, Coach Romelia Aragon was named an El Paso All-City Basketball Coach of the Year. Representing the team tonight are Alex Derasas. Teresa Quintana. Bukola Akomolafe. Ashley Lopez. Ana Mata. Jackie Morales. Tiar Reyes. Ellie Mae Sines. Assistant coaches are Samuel Sanchez. Elizabeth Bolden. And Head Coach, Coach of the Year, Romelia Aragon. Keep smiling, looking straight ahead. Hold those certificates high. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize the Eastlake High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team for winning a UIL 5A Bi-District Championship. To earn the Bi-District Title, the Falcons beat Burgess, the top-ranked team in the state and the District 15A champ. The Falcons also won the Fabians Tournament and finished third at the Tall City and Franklin Holiday Games. They had a 13-5 district record and finished strong with an impressive overall record of 23 and 12. Congratulations to these championship Falcons. They are Adam Herrera. Orion Olivas. Isaac Marquez. Derek Rojas. Alex Pina. Jeremy Vasquez. Blas Campayan. Brandon Rios. Matthew Jones. Team Manager Kristen Coleman. Also Ashley Negrete. Assistant coaches Taylor Young. Jesús Delgado. And they're led by Head Coach Jonathan Crawford. If we can have you all please come back to the front for a photo. We'll see, we might swap. You want to put, you want to put the board down or? Or if they all just stay down? There you go. We have one of the coaches or two of the coaches here. Okay, everybody ready? Ready, one, two, three. Keep smiling, looking right ahead. Congratulations. Next, we honor the America's High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team for winning UIL 16A District, 6A Bi-District and Area Championships. The Trail Blazers set the bar higher this season, finishing with an overall record of 29 and 8 and an impressive district record of 10 and 0. The championship Trail Blazers are Kobe Edusala. Adrian Velazquez. Tyler Wilson. Eric Casaneda. Joseph Deanda. Christian Martinez. Angel Gutierrez. Treasure Brown. JP Sanchez. And they're led by Head Coach Mike Brooks. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize the three TMS ISD mariachi groups that advanced to the 2019 UIL State Mariachi Festival. America's Eastlake and Socorro High Schools were three of only four mariachi groups in the region to advance to the UIL State Competition. SISD's talented musicians impressed the audiences, audience, and judges with their song selection, stage presence, and talent. Congratulations to all three of these mariachi groups. We'll recognize and bring up each of the groups individually. Beginning with America's High School, we have Martín Ávila. Brian Dominguez. Michael Briseño. Hugo Hernández. Edgar Chaparro. Diego Vialobos. Sofia Walker. Luisa Ramos. And their instructor is Sergio Ramos. Keep smiling, looking straight ahead. Alright, congratulations once again. We'll continue with mariachi falco from Eastlake High School. Alondra Carvajal. Amber Agüero. Michelle Pelayo. Alejandro Escalero. Alexis Escalera. Karen Perea. Miguel Rodriguez. Leslie Canales. Edgar Rodriguez. And their instructors are Jessica García. And Steve Hernández. If we can have you please return to the front for a photo. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize Socorro High School's Mariachi Gavilanes for being one of only 17 Texas Schools mariachi programs to earn the superior rating for their outstanding performance at the state competition. Absolutely, round of applause for the amazing accomplishment. The group also had 15 students earn outstanding individual musicianship awards. Congratulations again for that outstanding accomplishment. They are Jennifer Bentoncourt. Areli Grajeda. Ankela Moran. Edward Bautista. Giovanni Betances. Jessica Delgado. Dorothy Macías. Jocelyn Bentoncourt. Nicolet Brilia. Angel Sanchez. Eric Morales. José Pompa. José Chávez. Jesús Torres. Pablo Rosas. Irel Derasas. Steve Ramírez. And their instructors are Juan González. José Parada. And Roger Rosales. Can we see everybody at Cabus? You want to have them scoot over that way a little bit? Watch the hat. Oh, not no more. If you can't see them at Cabus, let's have them move over a little bit. Okay. One last one. Congratulations once again. Acavias. Mr. Largo. We have Ms. Prince. Ms. Prince. Hey, I'm okay, thank you. If you want. Kind of cool. Next, we have a special presentation to honor a Team SISD teacher that won the 2019 Environmental Educator of the Year Award, given by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. This inspiring educator earned the recognition for her creative conservation art project, desert cleanups, art shows, presentations, and workshops, which educate the public on how to combat pollution and care for the environment. She won a $2,500 grant to go toward her highly successful It Your World Art Recycling and Community Service Project. She will be recognized in May at the TCEQ Environmental Trade Fair and Conference in Austin. From El Dorado High School, congratulations to Ms. Candace Prince. Congratulations once again. If Ms. Nakada had offered as well, if whoever, that would... Absolutely.
Our second special presentation... Our second special presentation will recognize the SISD Public Relations Department for earning the top Public Relations Award in the state from the Texas School Public Relations Association. Through the vision and leadership of Dr. Espinoza and the continuous outstanding support from the Board of Trustees, the PR team was able to garner the prestigious award. The SISD PR department is the first El Paso team to win the TSPRA, TESPRA Platinum Award, making them the highest-awarded school PR team in the region. The department won the Platinum Award for its hashtag Team SISD Endless Opportunities Campaign. They won another top honor, a crystal commendation, for SISD's Stand and Deliver Walk and seventeen gold and silver awards for outstanding publications, multimedia, and marketing projects executed during the 2017-2018 school year. Congratulations to the SISD Public Relations Department. They are: Cesar Ruiz, Maya Kurtley, Itzel Molina, Ms. Paula Diaz, Brianda González. Am I going to have to take the picture too? Acavias Largo. Emily De Santos, Ferny Saniceros, Andrew Campos, Megan Martinez, Jordan Alarcon, Kristi Flores Jones, Andy Pérez, and last but not least, their leader, Daniel Escobar. And now for the photo.
Thank you all so much. That concludes our recognitions for the evening.
We will continue with item number six, Board of Trustees Business. A Consider Approval of Proclamation for School Library Month. Ms. Sparks.
Hi.
Hi.
Board President Ms. Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board, this April, the American Association of School Librarians will observe the 34th anniversary of School Library Month. It is celebrated in conjunction with the National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th. Every April, school librarians are encouraged to create activities to help their school and local community celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play in transforming learning. The 2019 School Library Month theme is "Everyone Belongs at Your School Library." It is our intention to acknowledge the importance of school libraries by the Socorro Independent School District through a proclamation read to us by Kayla Dickerson from Lujan Chavez, the 2019 Battle of the Blue Bonnets winners from Escondriés, and Casara Phillips from Benita Martinez.
Whereas the school library program is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, and whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the library program is an internal part of the instructional program of the school, and...
Whereas the Board of Education entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, to provide literature and appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student, and...
Whereas learning begins and is systematically developed through the school library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools, and whereas, whereas, school libraries, libraries? Provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and...
Whereas the school library program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in the education, and whereas the school librarians of Socorro Independent School District have dedicated themselves to work for quality library programs for all students.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 2019 as School Library Month in all of their public schools, and calls upon school administrators, schools, students, and the community of Socorro Independent School District to recognize the support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month.
Great job, guys. Great job.
At this time, administration recommends consideration and approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Gandetta and a second by Mr. González. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you all so very much. Item number seven, Open Forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda, and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you, and let's proceed to open forum. We have one speaker tonight, Ms. Veronica Hernandez from Socorro AFT.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and School Board members. My name is Veroni Hernandez, and I am speaking to you as president of Socorro American Federation of Teachers. Starting tomorrow, Socorro AFT and partners will launch our "Today, a Reader; Tomorrow, a Leader" campaign to celebrate Public Schools Week. This is the first in a series of distributions throughout the district where we will be giving away over forty thousand books to students, educators, and SISD. I want to extend a personal invitation to you, our members of the audience, SISD employees, and anybody who wants to join us, not only tomorrow, but at all distributions, and see the unforgettable smiles of our students when they receive their own book to take home and instill the gift of reading. Join us and help us support and celebrate public education and strengthen our whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Item number eight, District Reports. A Facilities Report from Mr. Einten.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My report will continue on page 12 of your booklet. We had a facility committee meeting this month, and we discussed some of these projects, and this is kind of the executive summary of that. Of course, the first picture out of the book is a roof, so... Socorro High School. We are having a workshop this week to discuss Socorro High School in a little bit more detail and stuff, but what I can tell you is that we are working on it and continuing to work on it, and we'll be meeting with various departments. And we have been meeting with the Water Utility Board, determining what our access is from Rio Vista. And I just got notice today that planning and zoning from the city of Socorro will take action on the acreage that we bought. Since it was industrial agriculture, it needs to be rezoned to allow for the school construction, so that will be on April the 16th, and that's when our April board meeting is, so... But it will go in front of the P&amp;Z meeting at that time. Again, we are moving forward. Our intentions are to start construction on Phase One this summer as the schedule indicates, which will have to do with the relocation of the softball field along with some utility construction and access and student parking along Rio Vista. Cactus Trails Elementary School. We are really excited about this school. A few, I had the privilege to take the members of my cabinet colleagues, a few board members, Dr. Espinoza, went through the school during intercession along with the principal and her staff. So it was a very, very nice tour of the facility. It is moving and is ahead of schedule. If you want to compare it to our last school that we did on Carrasco, so feel very confident that this school will be... Give us a little bit more time to move into it. Our anticipation that it will be completed around the first week or so of July, given facility and planning, maintenance, and operation, and the teachers' time to move in before the start of school. And I think I have some aerial pictures of that. As you can see from the drone, the building is... All the panels are up, and we are closing it in with the roof structure and decking, and actually doing some roofing on it. This is the classroom wing, the two-story portion. And our next project is Montwood High School. This project is out for... Our Package One, which is the sports light, is out for bids as we speak. Last Friday, on the 22nd of March, we had a pre-proposal or pre-bid conference concerning that package. It was well-attended. There was at least five or six electrical contractors, and those would be the individuals that we would be hoping that would turn in proposals on this for the sports light and for Montwood High School. And that bids on, I believe, April the 2nd, if I'm not mistaken. America's High School. We are continuing to meet internally with this, with various departments. We do have a meeting with the architects. They're going to be... It's scheduled for April the 8th, and we will be meeting with them to go over the design, and then we would also want to meet with the administration so we can determine when our next community meeting is, not only on America's, but on Montwood and El Dorado. Eldorado is the same thing. We're meeting internally and continuing to work with the architects, working on it and doing reviews, and hoping to get a portion of the first phase, which is the lighting of the athletic facility, started this summer. The stadium, the SAC, the new stadium, we had a meeting with our real estate broker, and we are finalizing some legal terms between our legal counsel and the remaining fifteen acres that we need to purchase, along with some acreage that we are planning to sell. All that has been surveyed, and all of the information is being put together so we can close that, and the architect on this project, HKS, out of the Dallas area, is anxiously waiting to get that started. In fact, they made, they contacted me earlier this week for an update on the land purchase. The sixteen auxiliary gyms. We are moving on this project. We are finalizing some surveys on those sixteen campuses. The plans are seventy to eighty percent complete. Once we get the survey and the information, we can tie everything down on the sites and everything, and I will bring that toward, back to you once we get the surveys completed. We've been working with purchasing to do that, and we have, I believe there's an agenda item that has to do with that on the Board agenda tonight. I did promise you that the six, these are the sixteen campuses, and I had promised that we were going to break them up into individual or smaller packages, and the next slide should show that. And for, we put six campuses together, and we're calling that north of VDS, and then south of VDS, there's five campuses, and then the lower valley, which has to do with EST number two, which is the Fire Marshal's Office. Those are grouped together as the five. So we are planning to bid them out in these individual packages once we get the surveys and plans completed, and hopefully that will be, well, my schedule show that we will start it this summer, and whether we start them all or depending on how the bids come in, we plan to start majority of those auxiliary gyms this summer. The support service building, which is the addition to this building, is probably almost ready to go out for proposals. We, we need a, another review with the technology department to kind of review some things with them. I need to prepare our overflow parking, which is going to be adjacent to, or between the two drives. I know that's going to be a little challenging for some people who have found parking out in front of the dirt is where they prefer to park, but we'll, we'll move an overflow parking in between the two drives, and MNO will be doing that on internally. That's our goal, that we're going to at least try to do it internally. The new middle school, number ten, for the East Lake area, and the new middle school, the new prototypical elementary school, number thirty-one, I have on the agenda later on in the Board meeting to discuss that, and I'm going to detail at that point on that, at that time. With intercession being completed, we did do some work. This is, if you recall, Pebble Hills High School. The one on my left shows the field, or both of these drawings show the conditions of the field before actually we came in, or we were actually coming in to repair them.
Were we mud bogging on it, or?
Yeah, this was, it was in pretty sad condition, and then this is the way it looks today, and they have been playing on it. We did do some work on the backstop area. We moved it kind of up, and we put in a fence, and Mr. Carrasco and his grounds crews did a good job, and so we're, we're pleased with this, and the field looks real good at Pebble Hills High School. Desert Wind, we've had, we're doing some playground installation. Some of our intercession projects, we, we're working to improve the playgrounds at our campuses on a annual basis. We'll pick one campus and try to do one a year, or maybe two a year, depending on budget. We also worked on a couple of marquees and repaired those at Rojas and Serna Schools, and we did this internally with our staff, so one of them you couldn't even put letters up there. They wouldn't even hold the letters and stuff, so our crews came out there and repaired that. We also, with the wind, the March winds, we had some damage to some of our canopies, our canvas canopy, and so we are addressing those as we speak and trying to repair those, and in repairing them, trying to reinforce them also. We started a refresh on furniture for Montwood High School. We, we budget on an annual basis so much, I think half a million dollars a year to refresh, so we picked three schools: Benito, Helen Ball, and O'Shea. So we started with Benito during the intercession, and you can see on my far left-hand side what the furniture looked like before, and then the new collaborative flexible twenty-first century flexible seating and stuff. So Benito has been refreshed, with the exception of maybe some of their teacher's desk, and we're working on that. We plan to do Helen Ball next during the summer, and if we can't get to O'Shea, we'll do that in the fall intercession. But now that we've got this budget set up, we are going to set up a school during the intercession. We were able to turn this around after everybody was out of their tutoring sessions and after the first week of school, and we got started on it, and we were able to turn it around in a week's time. So that's our, our plan for the refresh. And I think that's all. You know, entertain any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ayington.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consent agenda. Are there items to be pulled?
E two. Nine E two.
President Nahara, please pull nine H. Any others?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of nine E two and nine H.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Au to approve consent agenda item with the exception of nine E two and nine H. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, second by Hector Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item nine E two. Mr. Au?
Yes, ma'am. I was hoping either Mr. Garcia or Mr. Moreno, could you illustrate for the record the six point two million dollars we're going to spend on computers to apply or have available for the campuses to replace computers? Could you please outline what that would include? I know we discussed some of this at finance last night.
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and the Board. This request is to continue to support the new construction that Mr. Ayington has provided you with an update today. Pardon me, I don't know, I have allergies. Pardon the allergic voice. So again, just to reiterate, it is to continue support of the new construction that we are conducting with Cactus Trails Elementary School, eventually the addition of Socorro High School, portions of the reconstruction as well. As we continue to support our programs, DNA, Wynn Academy, we have, we are continuing to provide technology for our classrooms. We have been working closely hand-in-hand with our campus administrators to give them guidance as to how to use their budgets to keep their technology refreshed over the long term. Just before we had our deadline for additional funds such as Title I expenditures, we, again, have provided campus administrators with an overview of their technology inventory, guiding them as to the age or the usefulness of technology that they currently have on campus, so that they can then develop a five-to-six-year refresh plan. This has already been seen to be of value to new administrators who have recently taken over principalships at different campuses, where rather than going in and having to do an evaluation of their own, they've had information to give them guidance as to how to continue that refresh cycle. We talked about in the finance committee as well, about how over the long term, the district had traditionally included technology upgrade monies and bond, passages of bond issues in the past, and in the last two issues, we have not had such an allotment included in our bond issues, so that has really driven the need for us to really work closer with, with our campus administrators to develop those technology refresh plans. Obviously, with the support of the Board, over the, over the, over the long term, we have been able to sustain the technology in our campuses, but we also feel that it's a long overdue for us to work hand-in-hand with, with our campus administrators to support them in that direction as well. Part of that has also included having conversations with our additional support departments, such as special education and bilingual departments, who also sometimes are able to provide an influx of their, their budgets to help support specific units or specific needs that there, that those special populations would, would also need. So overall, this addition is just allowing us to continue to support maintaining the, not just the current status of technology, but trying to make gains into making sure that we don't have outdated technology in our classrooms.
So, Mr. Moreno, would you say that by combining some of the old strategies we've had before on replacing old equipment and updating equipment, and now the new strategy on actually inventorying this and providing additional input to the campus administrator, will be more efficient than replacing and upgrading technology in the future?
It will certainly give everyone a plan of action, which I think is what was, what was sometimes lacking. It's allowing us to help everyone involved in creating a district strategic plan to keep that technology as, as close to, as possible to being on, on the cutting edge and continue moving us forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Nahara?
Yes, sir, Mr. Nahara.
For Mr. Garcia, Mr. Moreno. Mr. Garcia, as a, as a reminder, the dollar amount here, the six point two million dollars, is not a request for a commitment of funds, but rather it is an estimate of what the district feels, or we anticipate we could potentially spend in this particular category, therefore communicating to the respondents of the RFP just what the potential is in responding to this so that we can get beneficial pricing, and, and, you know, so they understand what the spend would be, and therefore maybe the potential for discounts even higher to make our dollars go further. So again, this is just an estimate to inform and not a commitment of funds, yet the campuses or any of the other departments have to have the funds budgeted to them in order to spend the money under this RFP, correct?
That is correct. That's certainly just the possibilities if we were to have fully funded, you know, available throughout different sources, but this does allow us up to that six point two maximum, which will then assist the departments and the campuses in, in having that avenue to order as, as needed, or as, 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 you know, requested by the recommendations being presented. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Au and a second by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nine H. Ms. Rodriguez?
Ms. Macias, I have some questions regarding the textbook adoption information. Can you explain the process of who was involved in, in looking at the adoption and what materials we have or that are being presented?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. I'm here to explain our adoption procedures for the Proclamation 2019. This year, we have been tasked to choose a new resource for ELAR for Kinder through eighth grade and Kinder through sixth, fifth grade with English and Spanish, and then, of course, in our middle schools it was just English. And then for our high schools, we have also been tasked to choose a vendor to purchase our personal financial literacy course, which we only have one course at Socorro High School at this time. So our task started in October. We did roll out our timeline to our principals, and at that time, we did ask our principals to choose a textbook adoption committee member to come and be a part of our process. For our pre-K eights, because of the enormity of the task, we did ask for two, one for the elementary and one for the secondary. For the high school, for the personal financial literacy course, even though we only offer the course at Socorro High School, we did invite all of our high schools to send us one rep to be a part of that process. So within that process, we started by, of course, having a district committee vet the preliminary vendors that were approved by TEA. This was a twenty-one-page document of vendors that TEA did approve, and the district committee vetted that document here before we invited our textbook adoption committee members to join us. From that list, we did vet according to resource type, which were online or hard copy or both, so we vetted that way, and then we also vetted through the teaks alignment, which each vendor is required to send to TEA that their new product is aligned to the new ELAR teaks. So once we did that, we did invite our reading adoption committee members to come to the district, and before looking at any resources, we did train them on the new ELAR teak so that they would also know what they're looking for, because not only are we looking at a new vendor, but we're also looking at implementing new standards for our reading and writing instruction for the, for the upcoming year. So after we did the ELAR teaks training, we did have a open showcase on December first where we did invite our vendors to come. We invited our parents, our, all our teachers in the district to come on December first. We had a district showcase opening from eight till twelve, while, so parents could come, teachers could come and look at the products that the vendors were offering at that time. At that showcase, we vetted the vendors further, so we narrowed down our focus, going down from the twenty-one-page document to the ten vendors that we invited, down to three or four, depending on elementary or secondary. And then at that point, we asked our vendors to send samples to the campuses. So starting in January, our vendors sent samples to the campus, and each campus was required to have a classroom set up with all of the samples so that our teachers could go in and view the samples. They were also given the vendors' contact information so that they could send them specific questions, and then, of course, they were given my contact information if they had specific questions that they wanted to ask, and we could answer so they could answer for their teachers. So we did that in January, but in January, we also held a second vendor showcase, again, inviting our parents, our teachers, our administrators, and I brought just a small piece of evidence with our binders, with all of the sign-in sheets, all of the agendas, just in case you wanted to view them.
Can we take a look at that if you?
Yes, of course. Just in case you wanted to view any, all the sign-in sheets, everything is there so that you can see that we had, we opened it up to everybody and all of the... Anybody who wanted to come? wanted to come could come. So we did that second vendor showcase and then by February, we did ask our campuses to collect their votes by their teachers. Now, we did ask our teachers who are in charge of ELLAR instruction to vote and then of course, our teachers for the social studies, even though they are not offering this particular class, we did ask them to vote for the secondary resource as well. So they all voted. We sent them rosters of all the eligible teachers. However, if they felt there was maybe a teacher that wanted to vote, for example, that does help for, with the instruction, for example, like our PE coaches that not necessarily deliver the ELLAR instruction, but they do help with interventions and wanted that opportunity, we were, we allowed them that opportunity to vote. So we asked all our teachers, we sent the rosters and our textbook adoption committee members were amazing. They did this on their own time, no extra incentives but samples that they got from the vendors and they collected all of the votes and then they submitted one campus vote. And then we tallied those campus votes and that's what I presented to you yesterday with our vendors that, for your approval, if we can move forward in moving and allowing, letting the vendors know that they have been selected and then moving forward with the purchasing process.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Are there any questions?
No.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Ayub. Is any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Masias. Item number 10, new business, A, consider approval of amended 2019-2020 student academic calendar. Ms. Farmer?
Hi, good evening, President Nahara. I'm sorry, good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza and members of the board. Administration recommends the consideration and approval of the amended 2019-2020 student calendar. The amendments include instructional minutes, removal of early dis- early release days, addition of staff development days for a total of nine, and the beginning of a nine-week date change in October 2019. Any questions?
Are there any?
Yes, sir.
Were we gonna get the calendar?
Are we getting rid of early release days?
Yes, sir.
For what reason?
As we looked and as we have been working with the schools and, and with the principals and the teachers, on those days when we are ready for early release and we get prepared for our professional development, many times the students are not leaving as early. The professional development begins a little bit later than planned. We've also had days such as yesterday.
So I vote to move to a Friday.
Then everybody leaves early.
Everyone will leave early then, sir.
Everybody like a Friday.
No, everyone will leave early. But we felt that it would give our teachers a better opportunity to plan and be effective, more effective for, for our students and their instruction. Right now at many of our schools, every nine weeks, our principals will pull teachers to plan and they'll have to call in substitutes. We're hoping that this will kind of alleviate some of that and will also help them save on their budgets as well.
The reason I ask as well is I hear that some principals tend to pull their teachers from doing that and have them doing other things.
Mm-hmm.
And instead of them doing what they're supposed, those days are meant to be for. I hope that's what's gonna, that we're gonna stop that and that day is really for what it's meant to be.
Yes, sir. They, it, so what we do, what Ms. Grossay, Ms. Retana and I also do is we do monitor what goes on. We are collecting agendas, but we also visit the campuses because that's important during that time. We want to see the planning. We want to make sure that any professional development that is going on, that it, it is happening.
Okay.
That's important. Yesterday, I was at campuses, the ladies were, were at campuses as well.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Oh.
Mr. Nahara.
Ms. Farmer, so if we're removing the early release days, that means that we're adding additional hours to each of those days and then we're adding staff development days. It seems to me that we would be adding an additional at least three days. Is that right? Or is the, am I just not seeing the entire picture because?
So we have four early release days, one in August, one in September, one in October and one in January that we would be taking away. And with that, two of those early release days would add to one extra day and then the other two would add to another day. So the first early rele- uh, the first professional development would day, day would be in, in October, right after that intercession time. The second professional development day would be January 7th.
Okay, so maybe I'm just not interpreting it correctly because I'm thinking, okay, as a teacher, I used to get early release, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I had to spend four hours or three or three and a half or whatever.
Yes, sir.
So let's just say four hours because it simplifies my math. So four hours, right? And now I'm not getting early release, so I have those students still for those four hours.
Absolutely.
And you're adding an additional training day. So it seems to me that all of a sudden-
No, sir, it's, it's built in the calendar. So our teachers still have 187 days on their contract.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Because, because on the surface, it, you know, if I just-
Yes, no, sir, they still have their 187 days.
And then the additional minutes? Why the additional minutes?
As we look at working with our students and, and it just helps us when we're working with them for instruction and making sure that they're working on their loss of credit and just all the things that we do with them. What we've noticed is on early release days with our students, sometimes it gets very hectic. In secondary schools, we see students, they're in classes for maybe 30 minutes and then they're changing classes. This allows us to be a little bit more effective in the instruction that we're delivering.
So if we were to do the math then, the increase in the minutes is simply a result of eliminating the early release days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got that.
Ah, yes, and as far as what Ms. Masias was telling me, also, two years ago, I believe it was, Texas Education Agency, TEA, instead of having days for students, we now go to instructional minutes, which is, I believe, 75,460.
Yeah, and that I remember. I, I clearly remember that. I just, I thought that at the time we did that, the number of minutes was a lot higher, so we were able to adjust the calendar to retreat from the higher number that we had. And now it just seemed like we were going in the opposite direction. So I was trying to understand why are we moving in the opposite direction and where is it coming from, whether that was a decision, you know, that, that, that we felt we needed to make? Was it a result of the elimination of the early release days or was there something else that I wasn't aware of that mandated, you know, that, that increase of those days?
So those early release days, that does help us in the, in, in that piece there for instruction as well as when our professional development days, because our teachers are working on instruction, that also helps us with those minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
I know, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
One more quick question.
Yes. She was telling me regarding the waiver.
Oh.
That we do.
Real quick, so are they gonna be staff development days or planning days?
They're staff development, but that include, in staff development, that also includes your planning. So this is what normally happens in staff development. You will receive staff development, which could be from a presenter that you bring in, but you're also provided time for planning to make sure that you have your lessons ready.
Well, I, I mean, we're like at a real fine line right there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because I tend to think that some individuals will take it and use it for one thing and not use it for the other.
And that's where, that's where we come in, sir.
Well, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, I mean, in reality, it happens. I mean, I understand your telling, but there's too many schools for you all to be at.
Many times also, our schools and even our instructional officers and the academics department also go out at schools. So it's not just, it's not just the three of us. Many times that occurs as well as Ms. Masias's department, the fine arts, our coaches, and it allows our CTE department to have professional development as well.
Like Mr. Nahara just said, we need to make sure our principals know what they're for.
Yes, sir.
And that they need to have adequate, adequate time for to do both instead of just doing one and not giving enough time to our teachers and them having to do it on their own time.
Absolutely, sir. I understand.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Ms. Farmer?
Yes, ma'am.
In looking at the change, who was involved in this decision? Did, what stakeholders did we include?
So we included-
In, in looking at the change?
Yes, ma'am.
In the calendar?
So, obviously, obviously the leaders here, but we included administrators and we also included teachers. We brought it forward to EPAC and then we even went and we were talking to teachers and asked teachers. I actually talked to two different staffs yesterday and as a matter of fact, when I was out at campuses. So we were talking to teachers as well, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, Ms. Nahara.
Mr. Ayub?
I actually had gotten this request from teachers before and then since you presented this calendar as informational, I went back out and talked to some teachers with this be beneficial. I understand part of the problems is especially middle schools and high schools, when you're trying to herd the kids out to get them off, out of sight so you can do your in-service, then it's a rush if for whatever reason you wanted to move staff somewhere else for some training or some event. There's no travel time allowed in half a day. The kids are leaving kind of, but they're still out in the playground, the stu- the teachers sometimes can't have devoted time for their, their new staff development, whatever that may be. Also by doing a specific day, staff development can be handled at another side, another campus. That would also, I understand, would allow for, not only for them to have staff development relative to their subjects, but also relative to fine arts.
Yes, sir.
Career and technology, these things that are all rushed, are not available other times. This would allow for those days, the kids are not on campus and whatever education that the teachers are gonna be getting will be specific to them. So I went back out and asked the teachers, you know, is this more beneficial? They said, we'd love to have that.
Yes, sir.
Because that way we don't have the students at, trying to rush them out for us to do our thing. The kids get early release, but the teachers don't. So I know I had, this I'd mentioned before, we, we really hadn't taken a whole lot of action when you all presented this calendar. I asked and it seems to be pretty popular with some of the teachers.
A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Item 10B, consider approval of proposed Socorroized Health Plan Design Changes for 2019-2020 School Year Phase III. Mr. Carmona?
Good evening, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I'm gonna be referencing page number 123 of your handout and I know that on the presentation or on the handout, we have Mr. Lou Arias mentioned, but he won't be here tonight. Ms. Rebecca McClothing will be here, she's from Gallagher as well. Just to provide some background information in regard to phase three, back in 2016, early 2017, a three-phase plan was approved by the board. Phase one was implemented for plan year 2017-2018. Phase two was approved for plan year 2018 and 2019 and now we're before you requesting approval of phase three. And on page 123, you see that we're making a comparison in regard to what's being contributed by the school districts in the area, but more, more so, I'm gonna be referencing phase three on plan design changes on that handout. There is no, the core of each plan, there's really no change other than for the premier plan, there's an increase on all levels of coverage, every tier, $40 for the base plan and the high deductible, $20. And the tables below each plan highlights the changes that are gonna be made. Other than rates on plan change itself, there's changes to the deductible, out-of-pocket, the emergency room co-pay. And a new change that is gonna be introduced for the following plan year, plan year 2019-2020, is a specific co-pay for specialty pharmacy items. And this of course will be communicated to our members, especially those that are receiving this type of items or this type of medications through, again, what's considered a specialty pharmacy item. I don't know if at this point, the board has any questions in regard to the requested or recommended changes.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Nahara.
Mr. Ayub.
A quick question at this point, I think I'll have some later. All of this discussion has gone through the benefits committee.
That is correct.
So we've had representatives from every campus aware of our financial situation on, on employee benefits as far, as far as healthcare and they're aware of, of these changes.
Right, and they're aware of the deficit and they're aware that the changes, even though it's phase three, is not necessarily something that's gonna help us eliminate that deficit, but it's a change in the right direction. I see. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions?
Is that the end of the presentation or is there more?
No, sir, this is it.
I, I have a question, but probably for Mr. Ressa. So while, while you're there, Mr. Carmona, again, this is, this is phase three of the three-year plan. This was presented three years ago.
Correct.
And, and we're continuing. That's different than what we discussed or what was presented at the last meeting, right? Because at the last meeting, there were some different changes in what we, during the questioning, we asked, well, what happened to phase three? So this is phase three consistent with what had been presented as part of the three-phase plan, correct?
Correct. During the workshop, the last workshop we had, A, was recommendations to be able to eliminate the deficit that we have and if there was a, an increase, a percentage being recommended across the board.
Okay. Mr. Ressa, I'll put you on the spot here. Last year, do you remember what the additional funding we had to contribute in order to avoid or to eliminate the deficit?
Yes, sir. We made a end-of-year, $9 million contribution into the healthcare fund to keep it in the black. And looks like we'll probably have to make the same amount of contribution this year to continue to keep it in the black. We ended up last year after that contribution with about a $2 million surplus and now we've, we're a little about, about $2.5 million in the red for the year. So we really are in the red at this current time. So we made a promise to our employees that we would phase in these cuts over a three-year process. This is what we're doing. We're hopeful that we, that will kind of stem the, the deficit. It may not, but we've made a promise and we're gonna keep that promise.
Right, Mr. Ressa, and, and off the top of your head, more or less, how many employees do we have?
Uh, I think in the healthcare plan, maybe about 5,200 that, that are covered.
Okay, so that equates at $9 million. I'm just doing some quick math here. 5,200, about $1,730 per employee.
In addition to what we contribute on a monthly basis, which is 5,200.
Right, and that's why I said, in addition to the contributions already displayed here, the additional funded, funding equated to $1,730 per employee.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then of course, this isn't, you know, we're, this is multifaceted. We also have the employee health clinic, which we're hoping will, you know, stem some of those costs and I still, I, I know that's still planned for the coming year. But certainly, the only thing that we can't do is remain stagnant because those, you know, year over year over year, dollar amount contributions are, I certainly understand are unsustainable.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nahara?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ayub.
So in reference to this cost, and I don't know if Mr. Carmona or Mr. Ressa can address it, we're anticipating a $9 million deficit in the healthcare this go around.
No, sir. Well, well, what we're saying is that we're gonna probably have to make a $9 million contribution to keep it in the black at the end of the year.
Or change benefit plan.
That's correct.
Okay, which had been actually a recommendation from one of our advisors, that every other company, every other corporation, they change this plan in order so that it pays for itself, whether it's employee contribution or the employer contribution. Right, and this board has always been very supportive of not springing out on employees, phasing it in, adding money to this because we realized that everything that we add to the benefit package here as far as their cost comes out of their pocket. And so we try to give a raise, but if you give a raise and you do like other districts have done and raise benefits by $130 or $140 in one given year, then it, you're spinning your wheels. And so at the expense of trying to balance other things within the budget, we have put in 9 million and intend to put in another contribution this year so that we can face this and make it easier on the, on the employees and be, and be labor friendly with this.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, and this still isn't gonna cover the cost for next year. We'll have to look and see how else we can try to address it. Hopefully the health clinic will provide a huge benefit to our employees, better healthcare and also- a huge benefit to our employees, better healthcare and also at a more affordable cost, correct?
That's correct. And another highlight, if I may, back when we looked at the three phases, the number of employees or the number of lives that we were looking at as, in terms of experience and expenses, nowadays is greater and most likely next year when we're visiting with you again and presenting this information, we'll have other additional lives to ensure. So, I mean, it's part of a growing district.
And I think sometimes folks don't understand that we spend a lot of time trying to protect our employees, maybe being a little too paternalistic. The reality, we're putting in five hundred and seventy-five dollars per employee and in order to try to keep the plan from being too expensive to them. And so, if anybody gets sick, whether it's them or their children or whomever it is, that they can at least have a fair assurance that they have good healthcare, which, by the way, this plan is better than some federal plans. You can compare it anywhere. And so, it provides good benefits.
It's better than mine, that's for sure.
It's better than mine.
Well, and I can tell you, I obviously work here, I volunteer here, but I work at the college and I have friends that are with the city and oftentimes, they come across health issues where their plans don't cover it. And we've made every effort to protect our employees through this and it hasn't been easy for this board to do it and for them to be supportive in it. So, consequently, thank you to the work of Mr. Ressa trying to find the money. Thank you, Mr. Carmona, for your work and Mr. Campoya in trying to keep our healthcare benefits solvent, at least hopefully the coming years. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah. If we take the base pay or the total pay of an employee and add on all the cost of a medical and all that stuff, where do we stand compared to the other districts?
If I understood the question, just by looking at the amount of contribution that the school district is making, Socorro ISD, in comparison with other school districts in the area, we are at least by two hundred dollars higher. In addition to that, in comparison to the amount that the employees are contributing towards the health fund, there's a considerable difference. Just to, I guess, if I may, on that handout or on that page 123, here at Socorro ISD, employee and family coverage under the premier plan on a monthly basis is seven hundred dollars. If we were to compare that to another school district, go ahead and say the name, we don't mind. I'll say El Paso ISD.
The other one.
Comparable plan, it's one thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, there's a difference of a little bit over a thousand dollars just for premium. It's not, we're not looking at out-of-pocket deductibles, any of that sort. It's just for premium itself.
And by the way, from time to time, we have had a discussion where people have recommended that we cop out and go to TRS.
Correct.
And we're not going to do that to our employees. The last time that came up, we said, over our dead body. So, we are trying to protect the employees to the best of our ability at this point.
Motion to approve.
Any other questions?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Nahida and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item 10C, consider approval of administrator certified and non-certified contract. Mr. Campoya.
Good evening, President Nahida, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer slash District Photographer. No, I'm just kidding. I'm here tonight to present the list of administrative employees.
Mr. Campoya?
Yes.
Not yet. We have to see the pictures first.
Oh.
It's not a guarantee.
I think I took enough, though. So, I'm here tonight to present the list of employees that are recommended to receive their employment contract for the 1920 school year. On your Friday packet, you received the list. However, after further reviewing the list, we updated the list. So, today you should have received in separate cover the actual list that will be recommended for approval. And these are employees that are in the administrator pay scale for receiving either a non-certified or a certified administrator contract for the 1920 school year. The Department of HR has verified the list and at this time, administration is recommending approval of the list of the employees that will receive a 2019-20 employment contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We can't strike out names?
I'm sorry?
I'm just nothing.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any further discussion?
Don't get scared.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Campoya. Item 10D, consider approval of additional school participation and community eligibility provision. Ms. Shinaskey.
Good evening. Let me make sure this works all right.
You're going to show food at this hour of the night. Thank you.
Uh-oh. President Nahida, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I am proud to stand before you to present additional campuses that qualify to participate in community eligibility provision. What is community eligibility provision? We call it CEP to make it easy. So, what is CEP? It allows schools in low-income areas to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students at that campus. It eliminates the burden of collecting household meal applications for those students. And it also, it just takes out all the need for applications and that is definitely a benefit. Who does it benefit? It benefits everyone. It benefits our students. It allows free nutritious meals to every child, breakfast and lunch. It benefits our parents. Well, let me go back. For the students, it also benefits that there is no stigma. Maybe a student freed, reduced, paid, everybody's free. It takes away that stigma. It also allows the student more time to eat because now they don't have to wait for that cashier line. They just move on through. So, it's truly a benefit at the campus because our students have more time to eat. It benefits our parents. They don't need applications and they also don't have to worry about their students' accounts because they're free. It's just, they don't have to, it's one less worry for them. It benefits our school staff. It streamlines meal service operation and it allows for more time for other things as opposed to having to collect the money from our students. And it also reduces paperwork and it reduces the administration costs. And best of all, Mr. Ressa, it reduces negative charges. So, we're very, very pleased about this, the benefits to the entire Team SISD community. Schools with a minimum of forty percent identified students qualify for CEP. So, those forty percent of students, the way they are identified is they must be part of a household that is certified automatically for free meals and that's with TANF, food stamps, any type of benefits like that in Texas that they qualify for. So, currently, right now, we have twelve campuses that participated in the CEP program and we're so happy with those twelve. But I have to tell you, my team has worked all year long. They have worked so hard and with their hard work, we are able to add fourteen more campuses to our CEP program. So, what that means is twenty-six of our campuses, which is over half of our campuses, will be eating free breakfast and lunch. And it's just, this is just truly, truly a blessing to our district, to our students, to our community, and I am just so proud of my team. And with that, I, I'm sorry, I skipped my page. So, this program is based not only on eligibility, but it's also based on participation. So, as students come and participate and eat in the lunchroom for breakfast and lunch, what happens, it helps raise the numbers. And when it raises those numbers, it means hopefully we can add more campuses next year or the next year. This program is based on a four-year. So, this is our base year. So, the campuses you see here now will qualify for the next four years. But if our numbers go up next year, we can add more and have a new base year. So, we're really, really excited about this program and administration requires, well, before I do that, any questions? I'm so excited. I'm sorry.
We can tell you a little bit. Are there any questions?
No.
Mr. Nahida.
Ms. Shinaskey, first and foremost, thank you and I commend the efforts of you and your staff. Certainly, this is a significant improvement and certainly offers an opportunity, you know. We have breakfast in the classroom already, you know, but like with anything else, you know, hunger and being fed is a fundamental need. Anybody who is hungry is not going to be able to focus in the classroom. And you mentioned the stigma. I do remember the stigma myself. For me, it was the other way around. I was the one in my class who had the ticket that got cut every day and everybody else had a cool card, you know?
Me, too.
And so, believe it or not, they made fun of me because I had the card that had to get cut. You know, so just being able to be in a line and everybody's the same. I remember still having two separate lines, you know, as well, and that was in high school. Not only the snack bar and the regular food line, but the people with the, you know, plastic IDs that got swiped went in that line and everybody, you know, who didn't have those plastic cards went to a completely separate line.
Yes, sir.
I think it was an efficiency at the cash register more than anything, but still, you know, you're creating these separations and you're creating these stigmas and that maybe we don't realize, but it certainly felt, you know, in the cafeteria and in the social environment. So, you know, I certainly appreciate all the efforts. I know it's extra because you're doing this in spite of having to do everything else that you're already having to do, you know. So, I also understand that even though we have automated or at least put online the applications, right, for our meals?
Yes, sir.
That in itself was an amazing improvement, but I know it's still difficult. And the reason I know because the first two weeks of school, I remember getting the robo calls saying, please remember to fill out your application. And so, I know those calls wouldn't be going out if we had, you know, the applications completed and received and sitting in the office. So...
That is correct, sir. Thank you.
Definitely, definitely improvement. And once again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, sir.
Ms. Nahida. Ms. Shinaskey, can you go back and show us the, I know you kind of showed us that slide, but can we see the new campuses? Thank you. Just...
Would you like me to read them off real quick?
No.
So, we, I'm sorry?
That's okay.
That's okay?
I just wanted to pull this slide back up so we can see the additional campuses.
And the day before, well, it was, I had presented at facilities and we only had thirteen campuses. My team worked all day long. We found forty more students and because of forty more students that qualify for, get benefits at their home, we were able to include Carrasco. So, and the way this works, you see the hundred percent that it says up there? That means that every student that goes through the line, we receive one hundred percent free reimbursement. So, it's not a partial like reduced or partial like paid. It's a complete free reimbursement. And so, it's just great. It's just a great benefit.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, Ms. Shinaskey, you did a great job. Not only did you manage to increase the numbers, you did it while being in the black. And that is tremendous achievement. And please give my regards to yourself and your staff.
I certainly will.
Great job.
I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Nahida. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, all of us?
Opposed?
Sorry, opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shinaskey.
Thank you.
Item 10E, consider approval of final contract sum for Eastlake High School press box. Mr. Ayton.
Great job, Shelley. Okay. Eastlake press boxes on page, where is it now? 128, I believe, or 127. On page 128 of your booklet, we have the final contract sum for Eastlake High School, the press boxes. Administration has to bring this to the board and the board has to accept the work on the press boxes and then we make the final approval. And that's all per policy CV local, which is facility construction. And basically, the district shall not make final payment for construction or supervision of the construction until work has completed and the board has accepted the work. Facility and planning has completed our due diligence on Eastlake High School press box and present the following contract sum, deductive change order, final contract sum and final payment for board acceptance. The original contract sum for the press boxes, baseball and softball, was six hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. A deductive change order, deductive change order was issued in, for fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-one point fifty-five cents, bringing the final construction cost to five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents, with the final payment being twenty-nine thousand, four thirty-nine point five seven. All deductive change orders have been signed by the superintendent. Administration recommends approval as presented.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to approve. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, real quick.
Mr. Ganda.
Strange, is this for both press boxes?
Yes.
This is for both? And this didn't include lighting, nothing like that, right? This was just the press boxes alone?
Just as press boxes.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to start making press boxes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 10F, discussion and possible action to reconsider and select option for construction of school site for combination middle and elementary school for Eastlake feeder pattern and authorization to solicit RFQ and RFP. Mr. Ayton?
Yes, members of the board, if you recall, after the passage of the bond in 2017, or with the passage of the bond in 2017, it caused for a new middle school, number 10, and a new prototypical elementary school, number 31, in the Eastlake feeder pattern. Administration has been working with our attorneys and our real estate broker to acquire some land. We have a letter of an intent. We had a pre-development meeting with the developer and we've got escrow money down on thirty-seven point, little over thirty-seven, thirty-seven point six acres. This is a location between Mission Ridge, Peyton, between Paseo Le Estee and Pelacano. That's kind of a general area and until we sign the dotted line, I can't really show you where that piece of property is or publicly can't show you where it is because we want to make sure it closes. But with the closure, which should be happening here in the next thirty to sixty, thirty to forty-five days, we will acquire that piece of property and it will be sufficient or enough property to build a combination school. And the reason for this agenda item is that back in, early on in February of 2018, a little over a year ago, the board approved, based on administration recommendation, a architect for the new middle school and a contractor, seeing him at risk for the new middle school. We looked at it legally with our legal counsel. To add the elementary school to the existing contracts would be too much. It would be over a percentage that we could not add it to. So, with purchasing the additional acre, we save some, we save a little over five million dollars on land cost, which will help us on the construction cost because it's going to be a combination school, similar to Butler and Puentes. So, we are asking or coming to the board to ask to, permission to terminate the existing contract. No money has been expended. No money has been expended. We've been in communication with legal counsel, and we've looked at all of their contracts and stuff. So no money has been expended on any of those contracts, and ask for permission to go out for new proposals for RFQ and RFP for a construction manager at risk for the new combination school for Eastlake. We will follow the procedures that were adopted in the selection of the professional services for both architects and for contractors. Administration recommends that your consideration to approve this selection for this new combination school as presented.
Ms. Nahida.
Mr. Nahida.
Ms. Iington, what size, what's the acreage for Puentes-Butler right now? Thirty-five. Thirty-five. Okay, so this is larger. Okay, and, and then, so I, I certainly understand that, that there have been no expenses occurred for the two existing agreements. Are there any penalties in those agreements? No, sir. No? No.
President Nahida, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza, our firm reviewed the contracts for both the contractor and the architect. So what we have in there are termination provisions that allow for termination for no cause, and there's no penalty. The only thing that it requires is that if any services have been rendered by either the contractor or the architect, then we would owe both for those services that have been rendered. In this case, there's been nothing. There's no sort of penalty. The termination provision also requires that we send out a seven-day notice. So if this board approves termination of the contracts, our office will go ahead and work on those termination notices and send them out ASAP.
Okay. And then, I would assume the answer is no, but I just want to confirm, there's then subsequently no preferential treatment for these two in the construction or design of the new combo school, correct?
There should not be because it would be a totally new request, and then it would be up to the board what sort of solicitation method you want to take for, for the combo school.
Thank you, just wanted clarity there. And then, Mr. Iington, so I'm always, as usual, giving nice round numbers for clarity. So under the existing contracts, if we were to buy one parcel of land, it would be about, let's just say, ten million dollars for the elementary, and then for the middle school, it would be another ten million dollars. And so by combining and just purchasing one, the total you mentioned would be, we're saving about five million dollars. So for, for, to build both campuses now, it's, it would only cost us fifteen million dollars if those were the numbers, correct? So we're clearly saving five dollars on the land? Five million dollars on the land, not five dollars?
Yes, we are. We're, we're, we're saving on the land, but also with our previous combination schools, we also will save on kitchen because we combine the kitchen into one and, and do some more economy in construction as far as the mechanical unit, which this has been working very good. But this is not a combo school.
Mr. Iington, lastly, the location of the school, I know that, and I know you can't be clear, so my question is not where is it? But rather, the schools that we are trying to relieve, you know, the, the, the attendance from, will the location of the new school or the proposed location still provide the same anticipated relief to the schools that we were expecting to relieve with its construction?
Yes, and I defer that to Ms. Macias, but we have talked, and yes, it will.
Okay.
Shook and Horizon Highs for the elementary school.
And Anser for the middle.
And Anser for the middle school.
Okay. No further questions.
Ms. Nahida.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, yeah. If we combine them both, what would be the savings in time? Because now we would have both schools done at the same time, not going for one and then the other, right?
Well, there wouldn't be any savings in time per se because with the amount of construction on, and, and I've expressed this on, on a number of different occasions, is that we're going to give, if we're, if we're able to do this now, we can put out an RFP and RFQ and get it out on the street. We could have this, start design on this in thirty to sixty days, or sixty days, let's say. It'll take about eight months to design. The site will become ready by the developer this summer. I am going to allow twenty-four months to build this school. In years past, we could build them for fifteen, sixteen months, but with the amount of construction going on, I'm going to allow twenty-four months to build it. That gives us time, if we start construction in twenty, July of 2020, it'll be complete for our timeline and for the school year 2022. That's the twenty-four months. You know, it, it's not going to save time because I'm going to give them more time to build it, just to help construction, because it, it's, it's very hard to get people to bid work because it's so busy.
I guess my question was, you would bring both schools online at the same time?
That is correct. That, and, and it would be for the start of school year in 2022, July.
Ms. Nahida.
Ms. Ray.
And I wrote this is for you, Mr. Iington, or Ms. Mata. On the summary sheet we have here, the closing statement is, "The approval will allow the departments of facility and planning and purchasing to advertise for the new combination school." However, do we need, above that, you're requesting that you want to terminate the above contracts. So do we need a motion to terminate the contracts, and then we need a motion to allow administration to proceed? Or, I mean, to just say a motion to approve doesn't seem to terminate contracts. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two items in there, and there's only one motion. So we'll need separate motions or combine both motions, but make sure we state termination of a contract and authorize administration to pursue.
That's correct. You would first need to terminate the existing contracts with the contractor and the architect, and then you can make a motion to, to allow administration.
We can do two motions on the same item, I realize that, so that would be a better standard or the better approach towards to do?
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I, I have a question, and forgive my ignorance here, but we've got, one of the, the architect would be for the design of the elementary, the contracts we're looking at right now, and then the second one would be the construction management. Yes? And they're both for the elementary and middle schools? So I, I guess my question is, why would we need, I mean, and again, forgive my ignorance, but why would we not just go with these people if we already have a contract with what we're going to do?
Yes, that's a good question.
Thank you.
So we looked into the Texas Education Code. You're allowed to consider change orders during a construction project. However, the education code disallows any sort of change order that would take you up above twenty-five percent of the contract amount that you've already approved. So I think we're looking in excess of that twenty-five percent in this case, so we have to scratch the whole deal and start all over again.
That makes sense. Thank you for the explanation.
Question.
Mr. Nahida.
Ms. Iington, and I'm just looking at dates here. We approved the original contracts in February of 2018. This also doesn't extend our timeline, right? If, even if we make this change, we'll still meet the original intended timeline?
No, because we already moved this project because working with the developer, we were looking at a piece of property that would not be available until the dates that I told you. So it already pushed it back a little bit. We moved up the auxiliary gems. We are going out for additional bond sales a little bit later on this summer, and the money will be there for these projects.
Okay. And the contracts, the existing contracts, they were only for middle school ten, right? We had it approved?
That is correct.
Okay. So motion to terminate the design and construction contracts for new middle school number ten that were part of the 2017 bond program.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nahida and a second by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Motion to approve allowing the departments of facility and planning and purchasing to advertise for the new combination school project.
Second.
And I have a motion by Mr. Nahida and a second by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Iington.
Thank you.
Item eleven, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss personnel and real estate matters and to consider rescinding resignation of Marcus O'Graham under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is eight twenty-two.
I know it is.
We are back in session. The time is nine eighteen. Number twelve, new business, consider approval of rescinding resignation of Marcus O'Graham. Ms. Mata?
You know, Mr. Blunt would usually at the podium by now.
I know, I apologize. Well, Mr. Mata is normally not at the podium. So I think it's a win for me. Board president, board members, Dr. Espinoza, this item should be pulled. Actually, Mr. Graham decided to move forward with his resignation, so there's no rescinding needed, and certainly there's no action needed from you all tonight.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
If there's no further business for this board, we are adjourned. The time is nine nineteen.